I'd like to call to order this meeting, the Planning Board, Planning Board will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Town of Burlington will be holding the August nineteenth. August nineteenth. September sixteenth. September sixteenth, meeting of the Planning Board is a hybrid meeting due to the expiration of the state emergency that was issued due to COVID nineteen, uh, the COVID nineteen virus, um, as of March twelfth, two thousand twenty. Please note that the option for remote participation via WebEx is being provided as a courtesy to the public. This meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Um, for those seeking to participate remotely, you can do so via the following, um, go to townofberlingtonwebex.com. The meeting number is one seven nine eight one five four two zero zero, and the meeting password is one six four five. The meeting is also being broadcast on the BCAT government channel, which you can find on Comcast Channel ninety-nine, RSC on Channel fifteen, and Verizon Channel forty-one. Um, it's being streamed on Facebook Live and via the B, via the BCAT Facebook page. The public will be able to make comments during the hearing, during the time for public comment. Questions can be asked via WebEx, the WebEx chat function, Facebook, and the Facebook Live chat function. All persons wishing to ask a question or make a comment must identify themselves first. Thank you. Uh, we have some, uh, uh, we have some items being continued off this week's agenda. May I have a motion, please? Madam Chairwoman, I'd like to make a motion to take item eight E out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item E is a continued public hearing, application for approval, approval of definitive subdivision plan for Redmond Street, Murray Hills Incorporated is the applicant.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these matters, Planning Board meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty-one, as requested by the applicant in email dated September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Uh, let's move on to citizens' time. Uh, you know, for everyone's knowledge, citizens' time is for anyone. You don't have to be on an agenda. Uh, you know, if you have something you'd like to approach the board with, feel free at any point in time. Um, you know, a- and we look forward to hearing from everyone. You know, our agenda isn't, we're civil servants, we're here to serve the community. So if you're not on the agenda, sir, uh, citizens' time is that time for you to, to come forward and speak to the board. If any audience member in the hearing room wishes to speak, please come up to the table, um, and identify yourself. For those participating remotely, please raise your hand or speak and identify yourself. Uh, let's move on to announcements. Good work. Um, so this, um, September eighteenth, I believe is this Saturday, um, has household hazardous waste collection day will happen at the Francis Wyman School. Truck Day, which is super exciting, is happening on the nineteenth, which is Sunday from ten AM to two PM. It's on the Town Common. Um, the Burlington Housing Partnership will be holding a meeting on September twentieth at six PM via WebEx. The Board of Appeals will be holding their meeting on September twenty-first, um, at seven thirty via WebEx and, and, or not via WebEx, at the Town, in this hearing room Town Hall. And then the Town Meeting is coming up fast, it's coming on September twenty-seventh on Monday at seven thirty PM, and it's going to be done via WebEx, via WebEx and, um, on BCAT. So be on the hook up. Great. Thank you, Liz. Um, I just want to acknowledge, uh, Paul Raymond, uh, he received this award for eighteen years of service on the Recreation Department.
Yeah, very nice.
So I'm gonna leave this here for the duration of the meeting and, you know, feel free to.
Yeah, I really enjoyed recreation.
Good job.
And, and our recreation is really noted every.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
There was recently a national survey that compared about towns outside cities and so forth, and number ten was Burlington. And the one thing they noted was that they did, really had citizens participate and noted, uh, the, uh, Burlington Day.
Absolutely.
That was a clock, was that, did you show up late enough to them?
No, he said, get him out of there, how are we gonna do it?
For all the time he spent there.
That's exactly, exactly. To any member?
May, may I just note also that a lot of people don't know, they said to me, how can you be on recreation and also in the planning room? And this is the bylaw, and I think we ought to read it in a talk, cause I'm sure Bill is getting this. Uh, it's Article eleven, it says Recreation Commission, voted, Town Establish a Recreation Commission, consists, consisting of one member of and designated by the Planning Board. So the first thing that says about recreation is one person shall be designated.
And Paul, thank you, Paul. Um, but to that point, I, I don't think people recognize a lot of, of, all of us, I think, are on other committees, whether it be Sculpture Park Committee, Small Cell Committee, Transportation, Housing Authority, you know, we all, we all have more than one hat. Um, you know, it's not just Planning Board, we're here for two nights a week, and then, you know, we call it a wrap. We're, we're very committed, uh, to the Town of Burlington, and I, and I think it shows.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Uh, we don't have any legal notices, uh, this evening. Uh, we can move on to, um, our first item. Uh, it's item A, it's a discussion, Approval Not Required Application, it's for one seventy-four Middlesex Turnpike, Norblum Development Company, Inc. is the applicant. Steph, do you have any comments regarding this item?
Um, I will, actually Frank DePietro is here to talk about the, uh, plan, and I would like to reserve comments until after that explanation. So I think he will probably, um, say many of the things I would say, so just to keep myself, but I will weigh in.
Welcome.
So, um, for me, Frank DePietro with the BSC Group, I'm here representing the Norblum Company regarding this, uh, approval not required plan. And, um, this is a site that has been, um, permitted by the Planning Board for the, uh, sort of lifetime athletic, uh, re- uh, residential facility that will likely be going to construction in the next month or so. If you recall, during the permitting process, there was a out parcel in the, really be the, um, southeast corner of the parcel, right in the corner of, Middlesex Turnpike and Fourth Avenue, that was gonna have a small, to be determined retail building, about thirty-five hundred square feet. And in the process of going ahead with the full project, it was decided that it would be beneficial to essentially cut this piece of property off, they don't have any tenants, it's not gonna be developed in the near future. The site will be graded to match the, um, sort of the rest of the site, but they wanna take this parcel off and use it in the future. It is my understanding that this parcel will still be owned by the Norblum Company, probably by a different name. So if, if you look at the history, when the parcels were developed, the ownership was put under a Northwest Park Building fifteen, or whatever the building was, LLC. The building numbers, a little secret, is the building numbers come from the order of which the buildings were built at Northwest Park. So, uh, what we're looking to do is create this in our lot, it has frontage both on the, um, Middlesex Turnpike and on Fourth Avenue. Due to the proximity of any potential access on this lot to the intersection, what we're proposing is to add on an easement, an access easement that runs along the top. I can sort of see it right there, it's thirty-one feet wide, it is a combined access easement for pedestrians and vehicles. Uh, and what we would look to do then is to create this lot, which essentially has an area of about twenty-four hundred, eight hundred square feet, or point five seven acres. It, the easement's, as I said, thirty-one feet wide, it has an area of, uh, let's see, forty-four hundred and twelve square feet, point one six acres. Um, the rest of the parcel would still remain in the, uh, Northwest Park, uh, Building fifteen LLC, as with this parcel. Like I said, at some point, they may change the ownership. Um, there is a wonderful graphic that I put together. Unfortunately, the people that could really, uh, draw on my team weren't available, and so to try to give you a little bit of perspective, uh, this is the, the parcel. Um, it's hard to see the larger piece is in fact what the entire lot is, it's a little bit of an orange. Superimposed that shaded area is the proposed, uh, residential building. The shaded area also shows where the parking areas and stuff like that. The blue shaded area is in fact what the lot is, the purple shaded area is the proposed access easement. That lines up with the existing, uh, the proposed driveway that's gonna be servicing the easterly part of the site. And it also includes the sidewalk, and again, the thought was people, um, wherever the youth may be here, they may either drive or run, I mean, walk, they could run too, I guess, it's probably exercise, to the site, and they wanted to provide access to get in. Um, be happy to answer any questions, but that's basically, uh, my presentation.
Great, thank you.
I don't have any, uh, well, the only other comment that, to clarify, is that if the creation of this lot does not make any of the existing lot or the listed lot nonconforming in any way. Otherwise, we don't have any, um, comments and would support the carving of the lot.
Once they do get an applicant, uh, they'll, they'll have to come back to the board as well.
Yeah, we were very adamant in the decision that, you know, we're not approving anything on the site now, if you wanna do something later, come back to us.
Great, I just wanted to clarify that. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Straightforward. Um, they have a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve and sign an Approval Not Required Plan entitled Approval Not Required Plan, one seventy-four Middlesex Turnpike in Burlington, Massachusetts, X County, heard by BSC Group, dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, reflecting the division of a single lot into two lots. The Planning Board finds that this is a proper submission of an Approval Not Required Plan because the defined lots maintain conformity in regards to lot size and the existing conforming frontage on Middlesex Turnpike and Fourth Avenue. The applicant shall submit four copies and an electronic PDF of the endorsed Approval Not Required Plan to the Planning Board Office within four weeks of this approval. Proof of recording with the registry of deeds shall be provided to the Planning Department upon completion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi. Uh, opposed? Okay, thanks so much.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to pick items A through.
Thank you.
A, A through A, D, to get for discussion.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item A is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to six point one point one point two, expansion of a nonconforming use of zoning bylaws, two oh seven Cambridge Street, Phase Zero Design is the applicant. Item B is a continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point three point two point fifteen, storage and disposal of oils and fuels, petroleum products of the zoning bylaws, two oh seven Cambridge Street, Phase Zero Design is the applicant. Item C is continued public hearing, application for approval of a special permit pursuant to four point three point two point sixteen, storage of hazardous and toxic materials and chemicals for retail sale of the zoning bylaws, two oh seven Cambridge Street, Phase Zero Design is the applicant. Item D is an application for approval of a site plan, two oh seven Cambridge Street, Federal Investment Trust is the applicant. It's first, plenty?
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair, I'm Thomas Murphy, I'm here on behalf of the property owner for the site plan approval. I think, uh, item D, I believe.
And my name is Jim Kimball, I'm with Phase Zero Design with the Architects for O'Reilly Auto Parts, we're representing them this evening.
Could you identify the folks that are on the WebEx that are with both of you as well?
So I believe we've got, um, Alicia Jocelyn. And who's with you, Alicia?
Yeah, Tiffany Lawson.
I usually don't get to see them in, in person since they're in Missouri.
Were they, were they?
They're with O'Reilly Auto.
Right.
Yes.
And I believe also on the call is Kathy Kenton, who was, um, property is owned by a trust, the trustee, longtime owner, passed away in the spring, his two children are, you know, kind of stepping in. Kathy is his daughter, she lives out of state, but she's here remotely. And I also believe that the property manager, who was here for us last time, um, is gonna be joining us, but I can't see his name.
Great. Thank you all for coming. Uh, just, please, Steph, any comments regarding this, these items prior to, uh?
So tonight, they, they'll present, um, a kind of draft landscape plan that, and some consolidating of, um, the rear side and some, um, trash consolidation. But really what we want to accomplish tonight is really give direction to the applicant, both, um, the applicant for the site plan, the property owner, as well as, um, O'Reilly, as to what the Planning Board is looking for to add to the plan, um, so we can move forward with their plan revisions and, and just really giving a direction. There, we have had, as I mentioned, conversation with Kathy Kenton, the representative property owner, which is very good, she submitted a plan showing, um, additional landscaping, which I'm sure Tom will present, um, this evening. We had some initial comments, um, we had some comments that also, um, in your staff report, kind of just bulleted some comments we've had about, um, something last time, but also, you know, the landscape planters in the front tightening the curve.
O'Reilly.
Um, and then, anyway, and consolidation of the trash in the back. So what I'd really like to do is really get a message from the Planning Board as to really, that list, that bullet list of what we're looking for for them to add to the plan. Um, as well as, you know, I think you guys have, I know you guys have spent such time, I just I feel really what we're trying to accomplish in this, great, um, of these sites, and really getting some high value, um, tenants and really activate these sites. It's an older industrial building, what can we do to really have that kind of inside out feel, um, with landscaping as well as outdoor seating and activation, so. So we don't have a decision drafted for tonight, they still need to open with Conservation Commission, some issues, but really just wanna give direction from this board as we move forward with those things.
Okay. Now, do you wanna walk us through, um, what you're presenting here this evening?
I think I'll go first.
I would recommend we start with the property owner and, um, Tom, or Attorney Murphy, I know you had some with Kathy Kenton, the owner, some ideas.
Sure.
I think a- also, a- as you're describing what you're doing, can you say who's gonna be responsible for what, what item at hand?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, the, um, forward electronically, I believe that's what we're looking at here. Stems down further. Um, but my client appeared a, a proposed landscape plan, um, the quote-unquote red line version. Okay, we figured there was gonna be some give and take, and so, once we get booked, the final plan, we'll obviously get it done, uh, by the engineer. Uh, but in any events, um, after listening to the board and some of the comments when we were in here last time, and also, um, the property owners, you know, generally understand that there had to be some, uh, some things addressed on the site. We've come up with a, a proposed landscape plan, uh, which creates green space along the street similar to what's in front of the adjacent building, I think was one of the requests last time. By the adjacent building, I mean the one that used to have Patterson's, uh, strip of stores. So right along the street, there'll be, there'll be, um, green space, and, and they proposed, my client proposed planting some trees. Uh, they, they mentioned Cleveland pear trees, but I guess that's subject to discussion. Um, if you remember, there was, to the right of the building, there was gonna be a, a drainage, um, depression created. Uh, there's been a problem over the years of water running down the hill across my client's property and out onto Cambridge Street, which creates problems, especially in the winter. So we have a proposed, um, hopefully a solution to that problem, so that we can mitigate it. And before the Board of Health, a week or so ago, they proved it with, and I, I assume their comments have been submitted by now. Basically, there's just gonna collect a runoff from the hill, um, there's gonna be a depression, uh, there'll be an overflow pipe that'll connect with the, um, catch based on Cambridge Street. Hopefully by doing that, the water won't sheet across the property and go into the street. But as part, parcel of that, it's gonna require, currently on the right side of the building, there's a, there's a parking area. Visually, looks like the same parking lot as the adjacent jewelry store, there's no separation between, at the property line. Um, but the, um, four of those spaces, uh, will be removed, dug up to create this basin, and then we'll, we'll also propose doing some landscaping around the front part of that basin. Yeah, Board of Health, as I'm sure you, you're aware, requires some sort of, uh, blocking to make sure cars don't drive into the, into the basin. So, uh, they suggested, Brian was agreeable to, to putting ballards, and there's gonna be a row of abracadis between the ballards and the street, so you won't see the ballards if you're driving by, but it's gonna be there. So there'll be some green space to the right side of the building, and, um, and, and planted in there will be a row of abracadis to screen both the, uh, retention area and the ballards that are gonna be there for safety reasons. Um, across the front of the building, you can see green strip, uh, and that's where the, the current front stairs are. As we discussed last time, those, that's not really an active entrance to the building, it's, it's an emergency ingress. However, we can't take the steps down, but what we're proposing to do is build a raised garden on either side of the stairs, the length of the front of the building. The client's proposing a couple of feet in height, but again, that's subject to discussion. Uh, and it suggests various kinds of plantings, uh, trees, endor, perennials, and again, the, the type of, the type of, uh, planting that we, when they're, will go there is subject that we're, we're willing to take suggestions on, but what she was, um, proposing was hydrangeas, trees, perennials, and some boxwoods. So that would be, the front of the building will have green str- space strip along Cambridge Street, uh, which will be grass with, um, with pear trees, uh, similar to what's at the next, uh, the next property over to the south. There'll be a, a retention basin, um, some, our top will be moved, the retention basin will go in there, and there'll be, um, some plantings around it, potentially, um, mainly abracadis. And then there'll be a strip of green space across the fronts, it'll be erased, uh, raised from the, the parking lot height. And then with various plantings that, I guess it, uh, to be determined, but something that's typical for that type of a setting. So that's the, that's the bulk of the, of the, uh, green space at, at the front side of the pushing to the rear, uh, over on the left, as you can see on the screen, um, it had been some, um, dumpsters and things of that nature over there, those will be removed from that area, and that whole space will be made into green space. And we're proposing planting four or five maple trees up in, up in that general vicinity. Just to the right of that, you can see a, a strip of green at the top, that's currently, uh, allows, um, traffic to drive through to the site behind us, which, uh, creates problems for my, my client, just because you have trucks going up and down his parking lot. And it might bother the neighbors as well, so in any event, we're gonna, we're gonna close off that, to, to take that away as a point of ingress to the lot behind. That lot has frontage over on, uh, where the street is on, on the left. This, that's gonna be green space, the, over to the right, uh, there's gonna be an enclosed area where the dumpsters we moved to. And they'll all be closed within that, that, within that fenced in space, to the right of the parking area behind it. Uh, been, um, various storage trailers and things of that nature up there. Uh, those have all been removed, I don't buy that tonight, actually, just to double check my way up here, those have been removed. Uh, they were the property of the tenants, and we told them that they, they can't do that anymore. So that, um, Madam Chair, is, is, um, the proposed, uh, landscaping features, it's a, it's a difficult site, it's, um, there's not a lot of green space there. Uh, it's a large parking area, it's a large building, uh, but I think this, you know, within the available, um, area, does a pretty good job of trying to, um, brighten up the front of the building, and also add some more trees, green space, and, and some buffer to the rear of the area.
Thank you. Will all that work be performed by the landowner? Do we have additional maps?
Um, while she's handing out, um, uh, Phase Zero also has some landscaping that they were proposing, um, along the, um, the handicap ramp, which I'm not sure, wanna talk about, pull the plan out.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of just on the list.
Yeah, well, she is.
Details.
What's on?
I think that's just, um, I would just.
Okay.
That's.
Right.
I can talk, no, I can talk to the last step for this.
Yeah.
So you, as you can see on the, um, left side elevation, which is facing the parking lot.
Sure, I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, do we have, um, these?
Make them bigger.
I'm not, I don't think so. My house is getting older, but we can, um. If we don't, we'll consider. I'm sorry to interrupt.
So I should, I should just back up.
The connection tonight.
Yeah, we can scroll down. So as we were going through and talking with, with staff, um, before the first, uh, hearing, which we're fielding comments on the view of the ramp and then the concrete, um, landing before the entrance. You know, cause of, obviously this building sits up higher, so we've got a lot of exposed foundation. So what, one of the suggestions that we, we took was to try to put some landscaping in front of those elements, try to pick the curse off of them a little bit. Soften it up, um, if you will. So we were proposing to put, uh, some planters, um, in front of the, uh, handicap ramp, as you can see on the right, and then again, on the, um, the concrete stair and landing in front of the main entrance to, to the store.
Is this, um, is this entrance, is that, is this exclusively, exclusively for handicap only, or is that, will that be a main entrance?
It'll be both. But yeah, so it's, the only entrance to the store is, is on the left side, which faces the parking lot. The existing handicap, uh, ramp was just recently remodeled, and, um, so we'll be, uh, using that for sure. Those handicap spots out in the front of the, uh, the building will be maintained, so those folks needing assistance will park there, use the ramp, but we're, we're anticipating most of the customers, the store will be parking out front of the building and, and using stairs to go in.
Before we, I would say, uh, of comments on the site plan itself and landscaping, before we get into any of the design of the building. But it's a.
No, no, that's, of course, um, who wants to start at the front of the building? Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Well, this, this, what we're looking at doesn't actually show the landscaping.
No.
Yeah, so, so it's a little, it's a little difficult to comment.
Sure. Um, can we go back to that original slide, please?
And that's one of the, the reasons why we wanna make sure we get a list of what we want the plan to be updated, cause they didn't wanna update the plan, that I have to update it again. Um, so we have kind of the step strong like this, um, that we wanna, you know, thumbs up, thumbs down, or change, and then by the next meeting, we'll have it.
And then we'll have more detail?
I would.
Next plan, okay.
What would be suggested to give guidance on this?
We're gonna go to the, the front of the building.
Yeah.
Thank you. I personally, I think I'm, I'm looking forward to getting more detail on the landscape plan, what we. I personally, I think I'm I'm looking forward to getting more detail on the landscape plan. What we heard sounded like direction to me. I just would prefer to see a rendering in some some more detail the next time, but I understand we couldn't do that now. Um I like that you got rid of all of those extra dumpsters and storage units or whatever they were. Um so I'm glad to hear that they're gone. And am I correct in understanding that then the dumpsters are going to be sort of tucked behind the building?
Yes, the back behind the back right of the building is what we've created and there'll be a fence all around it.
So to piggyback.
Under the building. Downstairs.
Down the other end.
Move the back back. Little room.
Right.
So to piggyback off of Barbara's question, so removing the dumpsters in the back, is there a plan for the tenants to remove the trash? They're not just going to be outside and everything's going to be, you know,
Yes.
thoughtically placed into the dumpster.
We've asked them not to throw it in the parking lot, yes.
I I appreciate that.
Um yeah, no, they they've been and we've made it very clear to them that that's not acceptable either. If they don't want to make multiple, you'll have to find a place inside. End of the day, or they could just bring it out. Ready?
So we asked the people on the phone if they're not speaking, if you could mute your yourself. Okay, thank you.
Yes, not the answer to the first, yes.
Thank you.
Want a clarification, if I could, Attorney Murphy, uh the rear, what you're calling the rear of the building, is that the part of the building opposite Cambridge Street or is this where, what what do you consider the rear of the?
Um I would consider it the, yes, at the far end of the building, parallel to Cambridge Street.
Okay.
So the building, in my mind, is eighty feet wide and three hundred feet long.
Thank you.
So I wouldn't have any other questions or comments. I I
Yeah, I just so I guess my thing with it is, I mean, I'm looking for as much landscaped as I can get. I just feel like this it's way overparked, you know, there's way too many parking spots. And I just don't know where the line, like I'm trying to picture the parking area to, as you're looking at it from Cambridge Street, the parking area to the left, is actually behind probably next to the building and partly behind this building. Hard to gauge, you know, how much of that is owned by this owner and how much isn't. Turning to me was, and it and it has nothing to do with these guys say, but it's it has to do with as far as I'm seeing the whole site. There was, I brought it down there the other day and you know, the strip where the Patterson's uh store was to the left back side of that, there was a there was a rusty old uh chain link fence. Now, it's a brand new chain link fence. Now, a couple of things concern me that is number one, they're just making changes and they can't, they 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 need to make, they need to come before us or, you know, talk to us or something. This is all part of a site plan that just keeps on, you know, they just keep doing what they want to do without even consulting the boards that they're supposed to be consulting with. So it's it so if this is, the building runs this way.
Yeah.
So the fence runs from the back of the from the back left side of the building to Terry Ave.
Oh, okay.
And then and then it goes back. It goes to Terry Ave and then shoots back. Now, one problem that they just do this stuff without going through the proper channels, it's another problem that we're trying to create connectivity and blocking. What they did with that was they literally, they have parking behind this building and there's no gate. They 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 fenced completely off. So you couldn't even park behind the building if you wanted. You'd have to walk all the way down the end of the building around and come this way instead of just walking right into the store. So they've cut off any kind of, you know, pedestrian or parking behind the building or forcing parking in front of the building or over to the sides or some other place that's more convenient because they've shut off any sort of uh connection to the to the buildings from the parking behind it.
And that's that's not owned by Phase Zero, correct?
No, just to just to be clear, that's not, that property that you're talking about is not part of what we're that that's an adjacent property.
Right.
Maybe.
The Patterson's Strip.
Right.
Right.
I know it's an adjacent, but it's it's owned by the same owner. And we need to be looking at this whole thing together because it's, how can we address this? I I understand, you know, it really has nothing to do with you guys. I'm just my conversation is more with the board right now to say.
Is it the same owner as?
It's the same owner.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
I thought we were talking about it.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's all part, it should be part of the same realty trust. It is.
Okay.
But it's it's not part of this particular.
No.
It's not.
And also just for the
The owner's problem.
But if the owner just keeps doing stuff that they, you know, that they didn't have permission for or authority to do.
So I feel like this is a great opportunity, you know, that that we can, let's focus on this and then, you know, uh the owner is here so that they're hearing us.
Yep.
And you know, I mean, we're we're
The board.
Right. We need to have multiple conversations, not just about O'Reilly, but you know, let's let's focus on O'Reilly and then let's go back to the owner. And you know, maybe that could be a discussion point next time we speak with with the owner directly. Is that fair?
Yeah, well, she's here tonight, right?
Yeah, and 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 just so the board knows, we've heard a lot of this. Like again, my clients are just kind of getting into the picture here and and so they're getting up to speed.
Sure.
Um the intent is that they're and and they've already commissioned their surveyor and engineer to prepare a site plan, the adjacent site, so that we can come before you similar to this. I mean, this is triggered by O'Reilly coming in, so so that's that's why we're getting and try to try to get that done now. Uh we don't have a similar tenant looking to come in next door that's that's very good, but we're going to voluntarily put a site plan together and come before you. And that's some of the things that Mr. Pemba just brought up.
So I guess the only reason why I'm bringing it is is more, my concerns with the site are number one is there's no green space. So as much green as you can create in the front, on the sides. My my second concern is it's kind of mayhem in the parking area. This there is, there are no drive aisles. It's we need to, I would like to see, because I'm hoping that it's busy. I'm I'm hoping and expecting that it it becomes a busy location for O'Reilly. Uh and and if that's the case, we're going to be seeing a lot more vehicle traffic going on in there. As it is right now, that whole sea of parking to the left of this building is is complete mayhem. I I've never seen a car drive through there and use a drive aisle. I see them drive right over the their their drive aisle is basically the parking spots. They just they just drive over the parking spots and go any way they can. I'd like to see some defined drive aisles in there. Maybe using some curving and some islands that could also incorporate some trees and some landscaping. Um and then I'd like to see roof lines. I, you know, they they're logo on the front of the building. It's, you know, it's certainly an upgrade from what I what exists now, but I would like to see some gable roof lines or something that, you know, gives you more of a colonial feel like that, you know, you know, that front can, you can incorporate a gable, you know, kind of a you know, gable roof line over a peak over that and then maybe on the front and create some peaks and some, you know, some facades, some roof facades, I guess. Um, you know, that would really dress up the building a lot. Um it's it's really a, you know, it's a big building and I know there's a is you know, it's hard to really fancy up a building that big, but we can start by having some roof line to it, I guess. Uh creating that type of thing, but those are big concerns aside from the, you know, the drainage, which I think you're you're addressing, you know, I think, and that and that would be a that'll be a big plus because I know in the winter time, it literally freezes on three A over there. Really dangerous situation.
Sure. I just wanted to make one back. I could, um Chair, um I think Joe made the the comment that it's it's way overparked. Um there is a parking chart space calculation on the on the site plan that the engineer put together. I it's requires eighty-three spaces and there are ninety-two spaces totally existing now. We're taking four out already with the drainage um facility over to the right. So that's going to bring us down to eighty-eight. So we're if you if you apply that the the parking bylaws, we're not overpacked, we're just
Yeah, I mean, the problem is, and this is, the problem becomes the same issue we had with, you know, all of the banks that created locations in the downtown. They they told us they needed the spots and that they complied with the law. We said, you know, we'd like to see the spots reduced because the reality is, we've seen over the years that those types of things, you know, they they never really draw the kind of car traffic. We're trying to create pedestrian traffic, trying to eliminate or lower the car kind of traffic. Um so I, I mean, my my gut feeling is, you know, there was, there was a an auto parts store there before and I used to use it all the time and I'd been out there and ninety, I I would venture to say over ninety-five percent of the spots were taken at all the time. And that tends to be the case with an auto parts store. People will drive in and drive out, you know. They're not driving in and hanging out and shopping there and then, you know, more people are just showing up and shopping. It's not really a I don't disagree with that, but there are other tenants in the building, including a restaurant and a market.
Right. Then there's a karate studio, which I assume has classes and things like that. So so there are the users there. It's not just
Users have been there. And, you know, and and so when I when I say I've gauged it by, you know, being down there and using it and to be honest with you, I drive down there. I'll just drive down because I know we've got a couple of open prices and this is something we've been really liking, you know, wanting and, you know, chomping at the bit to kind of address because it's really it's an unfortunate circumstance, the whole thing with that whole industrial area in the center of town and and being the gateway to, you know, residents and people back there. So it's very sensitive for that reason. And I I periodically go through and just try to say, okay, what what can we do or what, you know, even before your application came forward, I'd put on there to say, well, what what can we do and how can we create a more appealing, you know, uh gateway for the for the people that live there?
Well, if you, from what you said, when you reduce the ninety-two, you're going to reduce it down to eighty-eight, you're required to have eighty-three. Is that right?
Eighty-three, according to the calc on the
So that gives you some play that you could create, you could get rid of some parking spaces and create islands to help break up that sea of pavement and be nice, right? Because I think, you know, if I don't, I I I'm willing to bet that you guys don't frequent there at night, but you know, be being a resident and knowing the area quite well, there are a lot of people that speed right through that restaurant, leave the restaurant and then, you know, and come fair, you know, between, you know, um the, I can't remember the name of the new halal.
Hello.
The new halal um establishment and and the auto supply thing. Um and you'll find that there's a lot of police presence in that space because people slip through that that area. So you know, adding the islands or some speed control, whether it be speed bumps of some sort, I think might be ideal. Um, you know, to have a maybe a tamer presence there.
Yeah, I uh I'd be happy to discuss that with the client. Again, the only things on the face of it that I'm concerned about is if we go below the required parking, we're going to need some sort of you know, permission from you folks, which I guess we'd be happy to give.
Yeah.
The other, but the other factor is that um I also go to, from my client's standpoint, they have to have enough parking available for tenants. And I don't necessarily disagree with you, Joe, that maybe it's not as heavily used as it as it maybe could be, but if you get a couple of different tenants in there, that might be different. So and then all of a sudden, we've got a parking problem. So it's always a fine line between what, not enough or too much.
It's funny that they, you know, and I only brought the building next door up that for that reason. It's just the way they've fenced it off.
I I'm not, I'm I'm not even aware of that. I've
Nobody parks there.
I have no comment.
It makes it so inconvenient to park there. You literally have to, if you were to park where, you know, in that whole, that whole building has parking behind it, which I assume is is owned by this by that building. No, not a single car parks there. Maybe the people that work there maybe and go in the back door or place something like that, but
I'm I'm not sure how much of that is. I think some of it is is the adjacent property, but but I
Right.
That I I I haven't done any research over there, but I just
It it's the fence actually goes right to the, so the fence actually encompasses that parking area. And I would assume the fence was done by, you know, you're that same, the owners of the same building. But so so the point is, you've got a lot of parking there that's really that nobody uses and nobody will ever use. So those are types of things. Maybe we look at I I'd like to really gauge how much parking you you think is necessary there and then by putting islands in and creating drive aisles, we're going to create a such such a safer environment for everybody to be able to do business down there as even restaurants, which quite honestly, would like, I'd love to see some of those restaurants have some outdoor seating and some things like that.
Right, but to attorney Murphy's point, uh you know, the new owner is just kind of, you know, getting her feet wet with with the property and she's going to put together, you know, a site plan and they're going to bring it back to us. So let let's give her some time to do that. She'll bring it back to us, you know, where we're having conversations right now with both this property and then then again with that property. And um, you know, hopefully we can come to a meeting in the lines and and get that intricate activity that
Right, well, you were asking our opinions and that was my opinion. That's that. Those are some of the things I would like to see.
Absolutely.
Or if other people have things they would like to see.
Absolutely. I definitely think islands with trees or something to break up that sea of pavement. And and I also think that it might be a good idea to put some speed bumps in because people do just sort of just and they and they're not staying in the drive aisles at all.
No, or actually speed humps, which they have over on the property over there, creates a much better environment and it gives you a crosswalk kind of thing.
That's true.
You can create
Make them into crosswalks. Yeah, those are nice.
Um Frank, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, good night, Chair.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think that's it. Um to add to Joe's, yeah, just to support Joe's comment about the roof line. I would also like to see that, you know, again, we're we're really trying to support a, you know, a more colonial style in town center. Um so if that's something that that you could take a look at, I'd appreciate that as well. Gentlemen, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Not really. I'm listening to all the comments and it's kind of free for all now. I'm a senior, no, I'm a senior citizen, so I just drive up to the steps. No.
Right. It's almost like there is no defined parking and no really, no defined drive aisle. So it's like you park and drive wherever you want to down there. And that is really an issue that, you know, I would, I've been kind of chomping at the bit to try to address all along. And you know, this is kind of our first opportunity with the, you know, with the owner being present at the meetings and, you know, being able to hear what's going on because to be honest with you, you know, the first meeting we had with that property manager, the manager, you know, snapped at us and said, this pride of ownership. Really? Why don't you ask the neighbors who live live there and look at it all the time, how how much pride of ownership they've had over the years, right? And I'm not trying to bash, I'm just trying to say, I I I just feel like there is a disconnect between the owners and and I understand the circumstances. This owner is now taken over and really, you know, needs to, you know, dig her feet in, but she also should, you know, hear the hear the grievances, the issues, the concerns, all of that stuff. You know, I I don't want to hold, you know, this isn't meant to hold up an application because I I feel like the application just needs to keep moving forward, but some of the things that we'd like to see addressed, I'd like to at least have some acknowledgement that, you know, people are on board with it or
Madam Chair, I just wanted to ask, have we resolved the issue with condensers on the other side, on the right side of the building and the noise problems?
Yeah, so um the property owners have provided us with a um a detailed drawing of what they are planning. But I haven't given it to you, but it's basically a facade of where it's our sound standing. Um so, but I wanted to make sure that they add that to the details of the site.
So we'll see that on the next round?
Yes.
Thank you.
Um I had, uh, I don't know if it's possible, but with with other properties, uh when uh we have thought there's too much parking, but the owner doesn't want to give up his right to the parking spaces, we've asked them to put the what is agreed as excess parking into green space, but still leave it on the plan of parking spaces. I know parking spaces in buildings uh go together and it, you know, if you change tenants, you might need more parking spaces, but if you don't need them now, picking up the hot tub and and putting some grass or or landscape again there might might make a lot of sense.
Oh, and then they could be converted to parking if necessary later.
Right, you hold them in reserve. Yeah.
We've done it with big commercial buildings a lot up on um uh in in the wayside area. uh, in, in the wayside area. Uh, that's one thing I had. The other thing I was wondering about is this site is obviously, uh, that we talk about the freezing in front of, uh, front of the building during the winter time. And a lot of that water, and correct me staff if I'm wrong, is actually coming from Woodcrest Ave? No? Some of it?
Some of it.
Uh, I know, uh, this may not be a popular thing to say, but is the town going to step up and put some drainage there so it doesn't drain onto somebody else's property? Or does staff know about that? Any discussion at DCM meetings or what?
We have brought, uh, we have brought it up with, um, with the engineering department. They, um, they are, they're looking at it, but they haven't really discovered any future or any.
Okay. But they're, they're more than aware of the problem and they're going to try and give us some.
Yes.
Because if I was a landowner there, I
Yes.
I'd be upset if the town was dumping property on my, my, my property. And I'm glad that this property owner is, is willing to step up and get the permits from DOT to tie into, uh, the Cambridge Street storm system and put the, uh, retention area there. Because I think that's going to help in a big way. But I think the town should also be helping. Other than that, the, uh, yeah, there was some discussion on the, uh, the sound grouping, there'll be details in the sound.
We have it. I don't want any, there are kind of more architectural details of that. Would you like, I can.
The staff's out of sight with them.
Uh, if still, looking just a little bit more detail on what they are.
Why don't we wait until we get that here, too? Uh, other than that, I'm all set right now. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. Um, is it, is there a second for O'Reilly to just kind of interject and kind of give our thoughts and opinions if you're willing to hear that or if you guys have time?
If we have time, let's just have the board finish up and then we'll, we'll circle back to you. Thank you.
Perfect.
I was just going to say, if you go down to Terry Ave, keep going straight, you go into a parking lot. If you go down to the end of that parking lot, there's a huge, it must be five feet. Uh, it, it, it drops off. It's obviously all filled with, it was filled for parking. And, and it goes very steep off there. And there's a huge pipe that comes out there. And that's why when they talk about this water all going down to Cambridge Street and so forth, that there's a, there's a pipe, it must be five feet, comes out right there into a wetlands. And the wetlands comes from Fairfax also into that area. And that keeps going straight under Bedford Street. You know, when you come down Bedford, the water goes there and underneath. And then it goes down and takes a, a right behind the church and heads struggling for our welfare.
Are you talking at the end of Northern Business Parking Lot, all the way down, straight down Terry Ave?
Yeah. If you go, keep going down straight, there's a park, big parking, it's more to the left. But if you keep going in that parking lot, you, Terry Ave ends supposedly where the side was, where it's over. But it's all paved there. And if you just keep going straight and, and take a look, you'll see that, of course, that was all filled. And there's this huge pipe that comes out there. And since I'm interested in wetlands, I just wandered around down there and you could look over and see Fairfax. And Fairfax is, you know, collects water behind it. And it all collects there. And it goes under Bedford Street. When you come around the corner by the church, there's a pipe that goes under there. And it goes back, back to there into wetlands. And then it takes a right-hand turn and behind all those houses and then, and you can see it go under Sandy Brook and those roads. Now, if you go down those roads, you see the, the pipe going underneath. And that's where this water goes to get its welfare. I don't know if that, if there's any particular impact as far as this project is concerned. But I certainly would hope that the town and the areas and so forth, uh, are looking at that.
I'm doing some investigating for sure.
Yeah, yeah, making sure.
Kayak down that pipe?
I've heard of that problem.
Going back to Ernie.
No, I don't kayak anymore because I can't get back in.
Going back to Ernie's point about having, uh, you know, the more green space and then reserving the spaces. You know, there's five spaces that you weren't taking back that I think that would be great to make all green. And I'd be willing to forego the ballards if that was all green space, personally. Uh, and, you know, and, and reserve, you know, reserve the right to take it back if you need. And then if you need to take it back, then maybe we put the ballards back in. But, um, I think it would be a lot prettier without ballards. Like the front, between Princess Diamonds and the site all the way to the. All the way.
Well, the board, the board health requested something that they mentioned ballards. Um, so we've got to put something there to satisfy them. The suggestion, which is what we kind of followed up on, was if you put the ballards right next to the retention area and then you put a line of abovites between them and the, and the street, you wouldn't even see the ballards from the street.
That would be ideal.
So the abovites will, will screen those and also add some trees.
So wait, just to clarify, um, chair, so this, that area, Princess Diamond, the diamonds has those little planters, but that whole parking area uh, just part of it will be green and toward the back, but really take it from there to the sidewalk?
Yeah. That would be great. I think it would look amazing. And it would really bring in, you know, you could have events out there. I, I, I think it, it might be something to think about. Um, but I, I did, um, state that the O'Reilly folks would have some time to speak. Did you have something that you wanted to share with us folks?
Yeah, we just wanted to be sure that everyone was aware that we are more than willing to, um, get rid of some parking stalls if it works with the property owner, um, especially at the front of the building. Um, the people that are coming to the store that, uh, are going to be parking, we're, we're, we want to make sure we have all of the required ADA parking stalls. Um, but that's really the only parking that we plan to have on that, um, Cambridge Street facing the sod. Um, so any other parking that's not required, if the property owner is content with it, we're more than happy for that to all be landscaping. Um, and as far as the raised beds, I mean, we're fine with all of that. Um, and I think we're, we're making every effort that we can to dress this building up, um, as far as putting that El Dorado decorative stone along the Wayman's Coat, um, adding the pilasters and adding those, um, bump ups. I think our, from, from a structural standpoint, our biggest concern is by adding, um, peaks. We're going to be really messing with that wind load and the snow load. Um, if we're, if we're adding much more than what, what we're showing right now. So if there's any leniency, we can get on that, we would really appreciate it because um, we don't know a ton about the structure of this building. And that kind of starts to blur the lines between O'Reilly and landlord, which I know is not, that's not your problem. Um, but it just makes things a little bit neater and cleaner. Um, if O'Reilly is able to make our portion look nice and neat and as beautiful as we can. Um, and I think our, we're just wanting to make sure, like, we're focusing on the O'Reilly portion of this building as far as, uh, the visual upgrades go. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, and I think we had an updated elevation, but I'm not, it doesn't, um, I know at the last meeting, there were some, uh, questions about the tenting and what we could do to maybe alleviate that mirror finish. Um, we did come up with some options for that. And I know Jim's team put together a really beautiful rendering. Um, and I'm not sure if we're able to share our screens so you could see that, but, um, it does. I'm sorry.
To our, um, online permitting site?
I'm not sure. That would, um, Jim, yeah, Jim would know all of that. Um, I, I think that, yeah, we gave it the green light. So I, I think that it was intended to be uploaded. It might've ran short on time. Um, it might not have gotten uploaded, but if it didn't, I, we're sorry about that.
I don't have it.
Okay. Okay. Um, and it's, it's not a ton different than, um, what is shown here. But the, the way the glass is rendered, you can tell, um, at the front of the building, uh, well, sorry, it's, it's the left side of the building, um, where the O'Reilly showroom is. It's, it's more clear that you're going to be able to actually see into the store, into the building. And then on the, um, other portions of, uh, glass storefront, uh, it's a little more clear. It's not, it's not mirror finish. It's, um, it's just more of a transparency. You know, it's, so it's not as easy to see in, but it's not the mirror reflection. Um, and we did update the overhead door and that man door, um, to make them a little more decorative and less, uh, industrial. Um, so I just wanted to let you guys know, we really are trying as hard as we can to take all of your concerns into consideration. And, um, I think the only, uh, leniency we're hoping to get is, is the, the peaks, um, on this existing structure. Um, and I don't know if that's up for debate or if, you know, it is what it is. Um, but that's just our, our thoughts on it.
I think I, I would familiarize yourself with the building and see if it's something that you can do. And if you can't, then it's a discussion point, I think, you know, but, um, you know, we're, we're really trying to focus on, you know, beautifying this area. And, and I think you've heard more than just, that it just may say that, you know, it would be nice to see. So if you can make it happen, I think it would be ideal. If you can't, again, you know, it's a discussion point, but I don't want to right out of the gate say, oh, you know, we'll negotiate. Just take a look at it.
Yeah. And as far as, as far as that goes, is just more of a parapet what you're looking for? Are you looking for, um, like a, a new roof structure?
No, no, it's, no, it's just.
Basically a gable pediment?
Yeah, exactly. It could be, you know, it could really have nothing to do with the roof itself. The snow load is on the flat roof. This, this will have nothing to do with the flat.
Problem, the problem with that, with all due respect, once we start going above two feet, the snow will drift and sit there. And it'll, and it'll be sitting on two different points of, of the building. That's, because that was our concern. The, the first thing we, we looked at when we saw the, um, the guidelines was, I was drawn gables, gable pediments. Because that was part of the guidelines. But then as I started to get into it, it's, it's probably about eight feet to the peak in the existing parapet. So once you start putting that kind of height at that kind of width, amount of snow that, that's going to be sitting there, it's going to be substantial. So that's what we were kind of wary about doing because we probably would have to reinforce probably twenty-five to thirty percent of that roof to make that work.
I mean, you could, you could build it such that, you know, the support of it was, would deflect the snow. Right? I mean, you could go to, you know, build the back of it so that the supports are coming to point and the snow would deflect.
It's, yeah, well, right. We would put.
Not caught up.
Uh, we would, we would definitely cricket it, but it still would sit. It still would sit.
I bet. I mean, I mean, people do that all over the place. You know, I mean, they do that all, I mean, down in crossroads, it's happening right now.
Right. But, but those are newer buildings. This isn't existing. So, so that they designed for that, you know, when we design, uh, new buildings with, with those kind of, uh, pediments, we will definitely put in the right structure to support.
It's actually a retrofit. It's, it's, it's an existing. Crossroads has been there for years and years and years. And they, they are now, but not, you know.
The problem, the problem might be.
Part of it is even for deflection of, you know, they, they didn't want to go too high because their sound would deflect, you know?
We could, we could look at and definitely try to be creative to other, other things that, you know, I've done in, in my past is, is to project it off the building so that the snow doesn't build up there. We could look at something like that, but that's, um, let us, let us, let us look at it. We'll look at, um, the existing building and take an honest assessment as to what that capabilities are and, and look at maybe some other options. We, we understand what, what is in your guidelines. We, we, we were making every effort to, to meet, meet them with this building.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, it's very much appreciated. Yes. Go ahead, Ernie.
I'm older, right? I just happened to, uh, I, I looked at this on Google Earth and I don't know if you can see. Can you see that?
I could see.
Okay.
For, for everyone else who can't see.
See if my eyes will.
This is all my glasses. The, uh, unless this perspective is way off, that's a large amount of space between Princess Diamond, the building. And if that was to be green, that would be a huge impact, wouldn't it?
It would, it would look amazing.
It doesn't, nobody's going to park there.
Right. So, so for the folks at home who can't see.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Joe's screen, he's basically showing, uh, a Google Earth photo between, um, from what, what was the old front to auto supply. Yep, that's exactly. Yeah, thank you. Um, and actually, I'm, I'm on the same wavelength as Ernie. Also, if I'm understanding O'Reilly correctly, what they're telling us is that they want to maintain all of the ADA parking in the front. But there's a, there's a lot of space between that parking and the street to also be green. Right. And I think that would, that would be a game changer when you look at the property look like. And it's, I would imagine that green space is less expensive than repaving. Um, and it would, it would just make it look so much better. And Brenda and Joe probably aren't going to like me saying this, but I would be more interested, I would be willing to trade peaks for that much green space.
Yeah, I think if it's possible.
It could be a discussion. And no, I, I would, I would trade you for that one. Does anyone else on the board have any questions, comments? Okay, um, this is a public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments on this item? I always just want to note that we have, um, we have discussed the noise, we've discussed trash, we've discussed many other things. We're looking to move forward. So if there's anything about this site or things that they would like to see, those are the comments that I'm looking for.
Hi, this is Mrs. Walker.
Hi, Mrs. Walker.
Hi. I did hear you mention of the compressors. Um, now who is responsible for putting the barriers up? The owner or the, um, tenant? I know it has nothing to do with O'Reilly.
Um, the tenant is doing it. The owner is requiring him to do it and will oversee the work. And we've requested backup from their architect, or did, did ask for more detail. We're just.
Okay. Is there, is there any guarantee that they will actually do it?
Um, so I know that we, as the board, we are going to kind of require that that be placed on the site plan as a detail. So, um, if this, you know, if, if the site plan isn't built to what's on, if it's not built out the way it's supposed to according to what was approved here, um, you know, there won't be building permits that will be issued and there won't be certificate of occupancy as in. Um, so if, if, you know, the details, we're requiring that so that it, it happens.
Okay. No, I mean, the only reason why I'm asking too is because of the letter that I turned in that was thirty years old and not one thing on that letter was ever done. And, you know, I was just wondering what guarantee would have that it would be done. That's all. And that also pertained to the water issue.
So I, I think, I think you're hearing us now that this is definitely a focal point that, that we're going to be concentrating on. So it will be on the site plan and, um, you know, we'll, we'll make sure it happens for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments that it likes to make?
So then I kind of, um.
They have a motion? I'm sorry? Of course. Would you please come to the.
Get set up there, Kathy.
Thank you.
Kathy O'Neil, thirty-one Alphabide Ave. Thanks for letting me speak. I think from what I've heard from the woman from O'Reilly, sounds very encouraging. I've spoken to Jim. He also sounds very encouraging. I think O'Reilly is going to be an excellent tenant and an excellent neighbor. But again, I have to go back to the history that's been there. I understand it's under, somebody new is taking over, uh, somebody passed away, Tom? The owner. So my apologies to the family. Um, I guess that's a good thing, that somebody new is going to be coming in and having a vision and the energy to, to follow this up and make sure that things are being done correctly. My fear is almost similar to what, um, the last woman spoke about, Debbie. Again, I'm going to go back to NBM. I was here when they came before you for the special permit. They got everything they wanted. They finished their renovation. And the building is worse now than it was before. They've done zero of what this board required them to do. Zero. I drive down there now and where you were talking. I drive down there now and where you were talking about Paul's NBM parking lot, you go straight through. Never before did I see pallets out there, but now that they have the um special permit and that bigger addition, you drive straight down there, what do you see? Thirty pallets thrown all over the place. It's a mess. And it used to be a great building. They really took care of it. My concern is also with this building. Who is going to enforce these things? I don't trust any of them. I, I hope, I love to hear, I don't, don't compromise on the vision of the town center. We talked about the peaks for how many years. They should do both. They should do the green space and the peaks. It's in the guidelines. They know that. So why would we compromise? We compromise on everything. This cannot be the eyesore of Burlington anymore. We need to really dig in and make a stand. I'm all in favor of the enforcement officer as well. I hope we can do everything we can to get O'Reilly in there, but I think the property owner needs to step up. It's unacceptable, and I don't trust that they're going to do what they say they're going to do based on history. May not be fair, but that's the reality. So my question is, if they don't do some of these things that they said they're going to do, what, what do we do? In other words, with NBM, what are we doing to them? They're in there over a year now. They've done nothing. So what's being done about it?
I think to answer your question, I think this is different because these people need a certificate of occupancy before they can move in.
Well, they do too.
They do too. So I think, I think that, yeah.
Understand concern.
Yeah.
And I'll tell you, it's not just me. I'm the one who comes to the meetings because we know how long this is going to go on. I could bring many, many people here with us to show you how upset we are about all this. A house across the street was on the market. Twenty-seven groups went through. Nine of them made comments about the mess down there. What kind of an impact do you think that had on the value of that property?
And how many thought of it?
And how many of it didn't say anything because they were too polite?
Sure, yeah.
So I hope, and I try, I'll, I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, but I hope that this board stands united and strong and keeps the vision of the town center in mind and does not compromise. And make sure that we have some sort of a guarantee. And I still would like an answer about what's going to happen with NBM, because it's four years since they've been in there.
I would like to talk, I, I think we need to talk about that.
And they, they took, they got away with it, is basically what happened. They did what they wanted to do, and they, some that knows it, everyone else. And we drive by it every single day, and now we have to look at pallets on top of that.
And Chair, could we maybe ask um to have a, a separate meeting with staff specifically about that property? I'm just going to say that, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
If I visit over there, um, see what, um, let's get some pictures.
I'd like to also add about uh Bay State, I think is the name of it. I called there myself. I was extremely nice, and I asked them all, the woman who answered the phone, the pallets are a mess, the house is on the market. I live in the neighborhood. I don't like driving by and seeing it. Please, is there any way you could ask somebody to move the pallets to the back? Well, it's two weeks now. They haven't moved. I called the building inspector, John. Didn't get much of a response from him either. So I just, I think it was brought up uh by you, Michael, about the zoning enforcement. I think that's an idea that you people should, should follow.
Oh, absolutely, we're.
But I, I, I'm sorry to get off topic. I really.
It's completely absurd. So just to give you a, a little bit of, you know, hope, I guess.
Yeah.
I don't know if you drove through town center two weeks ago and it looked like it was feather signed central. It was hideous. We sent letters to every single uh property owner. There, most of them were uptown.
I did notice that. It's funny you should bring it up. I did notice that.
Our, we are, we're on it. We're committed, right? You know, while I, I can't say, you know, we have a magic wand and everything's going to change overnight.
I understand. Yeah, well, it's been thirty years, so I don't expect it to change.
I've only been on the board for a couple of years.
Absolutely. And I believe the intentions of this board are excellent. You, you all work so hard. I believe the intentions of O'Reilly are excellent. It's the property owner that I think needs to be held accountable, and I don't think anyone should get another special permit in that area unless there's some sort of, and I don't even know what that guarantee is, but they shouldn't be allowed to hang a sign without complying to the visions of this town center.
Which comes to the question, that's the question I want to ask staff, actually. How, how do they get an occupancy certificate if they're not complete?
Where are they complete and then they're non-compliant after the fact?
No.
Which is it?
No, they never, no, they never finished the site work on, on that, nor the business.
The building is done.
And the site.
Thing about what we talked about.
Be done with the lamps, the lighting and the locks. All that stuff.
It's just enough now, guys. We, we need you to help us. Well, they were supposed to put a sidewalk, lights, trees, shrubberies. There's nothing. Not, not a thing, like literally not a single thing, except they finished their building and they moved in immediately.
Do they get them? I don't really understand until that's done.
But I think we should probably, I actually, I should have a separate meeting, and we need to get the answer to that question, but I think it's not really. Yeah, this, this isn't really O'Reilly's burden.
I agree with you, and I apologize for taking time from that, but it's, it's convoluted almost. It's just so, so many of them.
I think we should do that, and I, I hope, I know you'll come.
I will.
We'll have that meeting, and I think probably we need to have somebody from building there. Agreed.
And again, just before you issue any special permits, please, we don't have to have, know that what they're saying is going to be done will in fact be done. It can't be afterwards. It has to be now.
We don't want to hold another business hostage. You know, we, we want to make sure that they're be, they're going to be able to thrive, and they're going to be able to.
I agree.
O'Reilly is, you know, they're here in front of us. Again, we have a new property owner, a, a new owner um that's, that's spearheading, you know, this, this property and the development of the property. So I think, you know, first and foremost, let's go back to NBM and Bay, Bay State. Let's pull, you know, the, the plans, figure out what they didn't comply with, and let's have a meeting about that. But again, I don't want to hold O'Reilly hostage.
I completely agree. As long as they're going to do what they say they're going to do.
I agree.
I appreciate your time.
Please, please, I apologize for your comments. We need those reminders. We don't live in those neighborhoods. We need, we need to hear, we so appreciate that you come, take the time out.
Thank you.
Care, you listen, excuse us. We need that push to make sure we do our jobs.
Absolutely.
We were elected for you, so we appreciate every single word about whatever you, whatever's bothering you.
Thank you.
Towards the town. So don't think you're bothering anything. That's what we're here for. That's what we're supposed to do. So I appreciate your comment.
I appreciate all of you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I have a question. Sure, and that is, since the, ultimately, the building we expect to have to communicate to architect. And is there any way that we can communicate with? Because the people come to us because we're doing a permitting authority, but we don't have the ability to not approve the project if it hasn't been completed. So is there, is, is there any way? And, and there's no specific enforcement office.
Not this time, because that's what we're pushing for.
Yeah.
So it.
Should we sometime get together? I would like to have a, you know, a meeting, uh, the building department, people, or whoever, and, and say, this is an issue that uh comes up continuously to us.
Right.
And there's something missing in the process between our approval of the plan and what gets built and approved.
Right. So I, again, I think that, you know, staff, if staff can support us and, and somebody could go over and take, you know, take a look at what the site plan was, see, see where we're falling short at that property, and then we can, you know, we can stimulate that discussion with the contractor.
So just, um, if I may, um, just for this specifically, this is critically why um it, uh, O'Reilly Auto Parts and the site plan are linked together, and we're talking about them together. Um, because it is tricky for these older sites and older buildings that have businesses in them. Um, you know, where those catches are. So that's why they are on purpose. We're talking about it all together. That's why O'Reilly um continued until August to start the conversation to let the site plan catch up. Um, so we can have them as kind of a package that go in together for O'Reilly to come in together and open and have all this work get completed. And have the property owner organize the other tenants and what they're doing, how we, so we can understand who's doing what, when they're doing it, and make sure that it's all tied to one thing.
Process question? For this, for any property? And we've, we've gone through and we have all these conditions at the building department, just the one who gives them the certificate of occupancy. Do we wait, before that happens, do they come to us so that we can verify that things were done the way they were supposed to be done?
Yes. Does it a hundred percent all the time? Not all the time, but that's.
That's where it fell down.
Are, are where we are, we push for every time, because we have, I mean, we carry a lot of other department conditions. We carry what a health.
Right, right.
Um, engineering department, and we carry holdment of our own condition. So um, we always have said that we're the second to last, the building's last, and we're second to last.
Okay, that's a process discussion we have to have with building.
Yeah, we've had the conversation, and I've had the conversation with Mark quite a bit um since he's been here. So I think things are, I mean, things are in a good place. It's just, can I say a hundred percent forever have they always gone down that road? That's the intention, that things, the way things should happen.
We have a motion, please. Adam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter, these matters to the Plenary Board meeting of October seventh, twenty twenty-one.
Sure.
All those in favor?
Well, I think.
Thank you very much for coming, everyone, this evening. Thank you for your patience. We will get through this, and we look forward to you joining the community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm actually going to be really nice looking. I think so too. I'm going to make a big difference. I think it's going to look great. Uh, let's talk about meeting minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to review them?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a motion, please.
Adam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and the minutes of September second, twenty twenty-one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a second. Oh, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain.
One abstain.
Okay. Um, what was the vote, I'm sorry? It was um five, zero, one. Okay, uh, next up is a discussion point. So um, I, I think we, we had talked about the Select Boards Transportation Committee, and it's my understanding that we're going to hold tight, uh, or we're going to sit tight until after town meeting. Um, so I think we'll just sit tight in that discussion until after town meeting, and we'll go from there. Um, related to that.
Yes.
My appointment to.
Thank you so much.
Partnership to free up Ernie, right?
Right.
So we're going to wait on that.
Yeah, well, okay.
We'll take all that at the same time, and then we're certain.
You, you could vote and then just have it be effective at a later time.
I would that too.
Is there scheduling meeting?
It's actually your recommendation to the town administrator, as I understand it, and then he makes the appointment.
Okay, so.
Since I call my candidate again.
No. You're taking up too much time.
My comments are short.
I, I bet. Block says otherwise.
You're all holding me up.
Going to get you there anytime.
There's, there's always the newspaper. It says, if you need transportation here, medical, medical, and so forth, and other things. And so I don't, I, there's something like, this should be integrated with that, because the problem is senior citizens. You know, and, and if they don't have whatever the transportation is. But apparently, it says to contact the person who's in charge of the uh, Human Services Building.
Uh, March McSonnellton?
Yeah.
Or the COA director to me.
Yeah.
Is that who me?
Yeah, yeah. But, but they should be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your.
It just kind of.
Okay, putting it together. Bye. All right, well, I would like to appoint Barbara on the Transportation Committee. No, no, I'm sorry. Ernie on the Transportation Committee, excuse me. Uh, effective, this town meeting, twenty seven, twenty, effective.
At the end of the month. Say, October first.
Effective October first, and I'd like to appoint Barbara to the Housing Committee, effective October first. I accept. Thank you.
So I, I, I still intend to attend as many Housing Partnership Committee meetings as I can. I just don't want to be obligated to do that if I can.
I understand.
Because that committee is a real.
Good, good.
I've been there thirty years, and this is the, this is the most.
Okay, so do we need to ask the town administrator to formalize this now? Okay. Do I need to do that?
No, well, they've been, they've, they've been asking us, and I can't, you know, so they're, so I relay it.
Okay.
Um, but that's why it's, it's good to vote, and they can, they can put it on their next one.
Great. Um, Barbara, do you have any updates that you'd like to share about the sculpture park? I do not at this time, but I do expect to have one at our next meeting, because we have things in progress. Awesome.
But you did have a unveiling.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I will say the unveiling went wonderfully. We had a nice crowd. I think the new sculpture is beautiful. Um, we've had a lot of comments on it. Oh, and one other thing, this is not really planned by the Burlington Sculpture Park. It's more through the town clerk, we've been informed that in a couple of weeks, there's going to be a wedding at the sculpture park.
That's fun.
Really?
Good. I think it was inspired by the Lovebirds Sculpture Park, but I don't know.
Ouch, I love it. Um, we don't have any correspondence.
Oh, she did not have any reports. Subcommittee reports, unfinished business, new business. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Adam Chair, could I make one comment?
No.
Uh, I was fortunate enough to attend the town's memorial for September eleventh, and I just wanted to give a nice hat tip to Bob Ryan and everyone involved in putting that together, because it was a really uh moving ceremony, and there was a great crowd out there. And uh, I went to high school with Matt Portini, his brother. It's Ryan Portini, he's the one who passed away from um nine-one-one, nine-eleven related ill, cancer illnesses, and the Portinis were very moved with um this, the, what they did with the monument, the improvements to the monument, adding Ryan to the uh, to the monument and the, the ceremony as a whole. So to Select Board Member Hogan and everyone, the uh, the Department of Veterans Affairs and everyone involved, uh, just a great job. It was a great day for the town and a worthwhile remembrance for the twenty-year commemoration of nine eleven.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Good job.
Motion to adjourn?
I didn't actually want, no thanks.
Too early to adjourn, come on.
Uh, the, as a planning, I'm newer, so I'm going to just, as a planning board, we can go to town meeting and ask for the funds for zoning enforcement officer, right?
I think so, yeah.
We can put forth a, a motion or a, a warrant article. We can put that together.
Did, did we miss the vote on that?
No, I'm talking about for January, for January.
So the authority is, lies with the building department, right? So.
Right.
So really, it, it, it's got to be a joint initiative, but it's really a building department thing, and we don't have authority to do that. It should be a combination, because that's really, we've talked about tonight about why it becomes a problem, because it's really our, you know, uh, conditions that are, that are, that are supposed to be enforced.
Personally, I think it should be somebody with a dual report into building and plan. So I think that, you know, we had that to the agenda when we.
Any town meeting member can put forward an issue, an item.
Can we?
Sure.
Yeah, as, as a town department, I think, as a.
So I could do that for January?
Well, we can, but.
I think it's something.
Point is this, because I would think it would, you, you should discuss it with building. First, they're the authority, so we can't.
But you have discussed the building, but I think we need to. But I think that's going to tie into, let's look at, you know, Bay State, NBM, yeah, and then say, oh, what are we doing wrong here, and how are we going to fix it? And I think that this is all going to be that part of that same conversation.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, great. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I say so.
Oppose? I don't have anything else to say, evenly.
Can I say something, Paul?
Barbara, the chairman.